Hey.
Hey, how are you?
How are you?
I'm good. What are you up to?
Just been, uh, bowling. You guys busy today?
I was thinking today, um, I checked out a lot of things. I've been working on a lot of things, like, um, trying to get back into the groove, so. Hey, Livy?
Hey, Laura.
No, anyway, nothing.
How are you?
Nothing too bad. You're done.
I know they would go to it, but.
We match. Oh, it's a blue day.
It's a blue day.
It is a blue and black day.
It's a blue and black day.
A black and blue day.
All right, put me down over here.
Yes.
Moving on.
You moved on, yes. You've moved. For now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so anyway, we're. So last year, we. So this year, we did. And my husband kept saying, I don't think I can do that. And I said, I, I have to. Yeah, there is a reason, because I have been, yes. But then. Yeah. And it is right, that's why I think it's. You're right, it does. You're right when you're doing that, you know, it does. Um, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's still. You know, it's. Just for. That's right, so anyway, um, so we have a little bit. Ah.
I can help.
Definitely different schedule of, so anyway. Well, good for you. I have my, one of my good friend's birthday on Monday. How are you? Well, I laughed, because I pulled in and thought, I'm a big lady. Like, I hear there's nobody here, but ladies, ladies, ladies. We're better than us. Nice to see you. Pretty good, remember, say, you giving your report today?
I just came from State House.
How things up there?
Busy, everybody's over there, you know, it's like.
Like, like ants, run around.
Yeah, everybody's over there, just so it's awesome.
Yeah, I kind of figured today would be a real productive day.
C and D C.
Now raining too, um. Stinky shades, Jim, he's like. I said, I'm gonna come lose some clothes and stuff, so. Hang out for a little bit, so.
I'm doing this, and I'm putting it over.
No, um. Selection of the seats is always an entertaining part. I think Johnny, who gives us that way to say. But I have a special candidate, they last week called him, he came from Lurin, he's breakfast.
Well, that's.
That's a good way of. To make it back to.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I imagine this will. That's really all I have. You know, or just get back. I can't imagine you're.
It is, it's a fine, it's a problem. Yeah, we have to get through all of it, and she.
Good.
There's always, you know, the city's always got. It's a combination of those, the city.
You don't work for them.
But. Theresa says, Theresa says.
One, one thing that the, who's state of the week is working on.
Harold.
Um, um, Jackson and. Partnicks, they've got to be working on that. Same. But that's what.
David Black.
Yes, David, how are you? David just started, well, just started, I say he's been there six months. How do you feel?
He used to work here.
Yeah. He was in DC for a while, and, um, and then his wife, they just moved back here. He's got family all here, so, um, I didn't see him today, but I did surprise him. Well, good, well, that'd be good, because I didn't know him before, and then your Matt was there. Moved back home, he's tough, he has family there. And so it, getting an idea on the side.
Yeah. He's one of those guys who's. Just. Job up.
A little hard. I thought it was a big lady. Look out in here, baby.
You already sworn in and everything? Already sworn in and everything? Everything?
Hello. Happy new year. No, we don't either. Yeah, they have. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I can, but I thought maybe. Hey, how are you? Thank you. Hi. Thank you. I was freezing. Cold outside. I hate cold weather. I'm a big fan. I'm not a big fan. I love, like, April day. Yeah. Makes me just happy. And I like fall. I like fall, too. I just am not a big fan of the freezing cold weather. I took, I took it, it's having a real hard time. Well, I mean. I'm serious.
Is that on it?
So anyway, um, I've been driving. So. This is not, this is indeed, to one boy or one girl. They never. I mean, they watch, they watch. So anyway, it's, um, Russia. You know, they went through all my stuff. Everything. It was like you. Truly. Waha! I was gonna say, chopped liver.
Of course not. I saw you.
How's it going?
It is good.
Are you close to me in Dodge?
Kinda, sorta. So I still have another year, which to me doesn't feel like I'm close, but it's definitely a lot better.
You're on.
Yeah. Oh, don't go near, don't go near the State House.
Oh, oh, no.
They're all.
My, my sixteen-year-old boyfriend's mama's a Clemson cheerleader, and they. All at the game, but I said, that's your only thought for days.
When I was leaving the State House, there was this guy being wheelchared up to, like, this older gentleman. Being wheelchared up to, like, so they could take a picture of him, and. I was like, really?
I couldn't believe it. Um. They have been going at it for days.
I'm City Manager, I'm Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Rickman. Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Present.
Mr. Bedora. Ms. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Davis. Mayor Benjamin.
Here.
Mayor, Mayor Benjamin, would you like to ask for invocation?
Sure, uh, Remiddow. Would you please?
With all hopes and opportunities you've afforded us, we come to this chamber today to simply say thank you. Thank you for your goodness and your mercy, and we simply ask that as we deliberate today, that the winds of your spirit might blow through each one of us. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Motion to adopt the agenda, uh, adding and also deferring several items. Uh, so a motion to adopt the agenda, adding to executive session, Grace Outdoor, billboard. Uh, so a motion to adopt the agenda, adding to executive session, uh, Grace Outdoor, uh, billboard permit, uh, appeal to item four, uh, receipt of legal advice, permit gentry, uh, presentations, add the Clemson Day Proclamation, uh, as item twenty-one A, uh, per, uh, my request, and deferrals, uh, zoning public hearing items forty-three to forty-five, text amendments, uh, per Mr. Duval, and defer item number fifty, uh, the Columbia Urban League funding request, per Ms. Wilson. Uh, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Same number with the previous question, Kirk Colerole.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. All right.
Mayor Benjamin, at this time, we will go into a period of discussion for City Council. If you would indulge me, I just have one moment of personal privilege while I have a certain staff member here with us today. Um, I'd ask Ms. Juana Botnait, I was about to say her full name, Ramona Botnait, to please come forward. She doesn't know I'm doing this. So Mayor Benjamin and Council, I really don't know where the time has gone. Um, she, Juana, has been with the City of Columbia since October twenty-first of nineteen eighty-six, and I would like to present to her her thirty-year service piece. So, a lot of us know that Juana has worked in various areas of the city and oftentimes worked with, um, Council and me specifically, and now what helps us with governmental affairs and governmental relations work and does a great job. And I mean, just a testament to the fact that we have long-time, long-serving city employees at the city, and it's amazing sometimes that I don't know how long they actually have been here. I knew how long she had been here, but the times just rolled up on us, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm City Manager. I'll tell you, that was one of the most entertaining conversations I've had in my years here, debating with Juana as how long she's been here. And she, she said, "It's thirty years." I said, "Juana, that's not thirty years." And we're going back and forth and she, yeah, thirty years. Thirty years. Amazing. Amazing. All right. Thank you, Juana.
With that, we will move into our state legislative update, how fitting on this day of, uh, the legislature going back into session for 2017. Our priorities in governmental relations will be discussed by Mr. Kyle Michelle Esquire with the Michelle Law Firm, who serves as our state lobbyist.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson and Council, and I would also like to thank, uh, Juana as well, who has worked with me since I have begun working with the city and does a wonderful job every year, along with the other, uh, staff of the city. Ray Borders Gray also works with us on governmental affairs matters. And then we are assisted day in and day out by other city staff. You guys may have seen me talking to Jeff Palin over here a few minutes ago because a bill was introduced that has to do with taxes on hospitality taxes, tax payments, uh, penalties on hospitality tax payments. And so we interact with the staff all the time to get guidance on what would and would not affect the city. I have been, um, gently asked by a few people to try to make this as brief as possible because of the schedule today. And I am happy to go through this presentation in a little bit more, uh, quick manner than I otherwise would have. And I'll let you guys interrupt and ask questions and then we, we may have some discussion at the end. So the way this is laid out, the City of Columbia legislative priorities for the prior year are on the first page of this, um, uh, of the presentation, and I won't read all eleven of them that we discussed and the council adopted last year. But I'll now go back, I'm, I'm now, we're now coming to the items in the two thousand sixteen session that were completed, things that got done, if you will. The first one and the most important one was the seventy-two million dollars that was put in the budget as state funding for local governments to use as their twenty-five percent match for FEMA-approved losses from the, from the two thousand fifteen flood. That was something that we worked sort of hand in glove with the Ways and Means Committee and then the Finance Committee on... Yeah. Thank you. So, um, the City of Columbia has approximately twenty-four million dollars in, uh, of, of twenty-five percent match funds required for our losses that we look forward to using out of this seventy-two million dollars. That is an estimated number. I would let the staff, uh, fill in the exact number on that. Uh, there's also some money that was put in for the dam safety program and there was not a dam safety... While there was money put in for dam safety, there was not a comprehensive dam safety bill passed last year. They're working on one again this year. It's thought that one would probably be passed. The state legislature did not appropriate any funds for individuals affected by the flood. That, those, that, all that funding has come from federal sources. The next page is the Local Government Fund. And, uh, last year, for the first time in, in three or four years, we had an increase in the Local Government Fund, which meant the amount of money that comes to the City of Columbia increased. And it provided, uh, two million nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and some change to the city. We will work again on that. This year, there are a number of proposals that are, that are being put forward for how, uh, that, that funding will change. It would, if, there's no way, I shouldn't say there's no way, there's always a way. It's very unlikely that it will go down. It will likely rise somewhat this year. But there may be some legislative action to change the, what would be the definition of full funding.
Kyle, what, it looks, it looks to me like, uh, using the math that's on your discussion of the Local Government Fund, that the state has shorted the City of Columbia about one million dollars in the Local Government Fund. We should have received four point one and we've actually received, um, two point nine.
Correct.
So, uh, that's, that's, uh, a million dollars that our citizens are, are not getting out of what's due from the state to provide police and fire and, and all of the services that the General Fund would have been able to provide with that one, one million dollars.
Yes. That's exactly correct. And that point needs to be made over and over and over again as we argue for full funding. Uh, on the next page, you never know what's gonna, um, take up a lot of time and energy at the legislature. But last year, Marley Drum, the Director of the City's Animal Shelter, spent a lot of time at the State House and then again in the off-session on a study committee because there's been a lot of, um, discussion and there was legislation passed on animal control shelters and, and animal shelters and animal control. I'll let you read the, the details of this, but in the end, we got the city and all local governments exempt from some of the more onerous provisions that, um, some of the advocates were looking to put into the, um, the legislation to, to make sure that our shelter didn't have to go through sort of heightened regulation on top of what we already have to go through as a city animal shelter. Expect more, more work on that this coming year as there is, are new bills that are, uh, being filed that would regulate the people who work at animal shelters. Transportation funding, um, I think that, without going through all the details here, essentially what the legislature did was cobble together money that could be bonded into four billion dollars' worth of repairs. The thing that should be noted there was that our Malfunction Junction was funded in the funds, will be funded out of the funds that came out from last year. We're hoping for a long-term transportation solution this year. Uh, so we're on Ethics Reform. There were the Ethics, uh, bills. Many provisions were debated last year and the, the primary ones that were passed are noted there on the Ethics Reform page. I think most people, uh, are familiar with those. The thing that is most notable is the way that ethics complaints will be treated and the reconstitution of the State Ethics Commission. The, um, we were also watching bond, bondsman legislation and we were encouraging and working to try to pass these bondsman, uh, bills in the wake of some of the issues that we discussed two and three years ago. And the legislature essentially decided not to take action on the amount of bonds that can be posted, but rather to take action on trying to sort of raise the floor on the minimum standards of people who are in the bondsman business. Finally, I think it's worth noting because of its relevance to council, to public prayer during open meetings, was, uh, this was passed and I think that you've probably been apprised of what this constitutes, this bill, um, essentially putting into, into law what is the, the law after court cases, state and federal. Okay, so twenty sixteen legislation that didn't pass, this is the one that is, that we have our eye on and is probably the most important legislation that we're working on, uh, which is the business license tax. We expect and hope that we will have a business license tax bill, um, come out of the legislature this year. This, uh, storm started brewing a couple of years ago and I put these first two bills on here, mainly for the fir-, the first one, the first one from Todd Atwater from Lexington, um, shows the kind of peril that the city's finances have been in. This is only one of three or four bills. One of them would have ended business license taxes overall. This one, this bill would have, um, said that you could only be subject to business license tax in the city or county in which the business income tax return is addressed. So it would be very easy for any business to go and, uh, go into unincorporated Lexington County where they don't have a business license tax, file their taxes from there and they would have to pay no business license taxes. Other bills limited it to a hundred dollars for every filer, no matter who or what business they did. The bill, the second one that's there by Mr. Bingham, who is no longer in the legislature, but that will be filed in the next, uh, week or two, uh, by a different, by a different sponsor, but I don't want to commit to that right now of who that would be, is the bill that we've been working on with Municipal Association. I think it's very, um, important to point out that the city staff, Roger, I'm blanking on Roger's last name, Roger Myers, who's very, uh, he's sort of an authority on this in the state, has been working with the Municipal Association on a, on a team that they have to put together this tax. The important elements of it are listed below. I think we talked about them last year. The most important element of it would be that in year one, it would be revenue-neutral for local governments. So we would not be able to increase, um, our take, our, our receipts in the first year. Obviously, they would grow as businesses grow after that. But we also would not, the city would not be losing any funding from business license taxes in the first year of the new regime. And that is something that's, uh, very important to cities as we try to make some reforms to make it a lot easier on our citizens who file these, file and pay these taxes, to do it in a more orderly and, and coordinated manner. Also, uh, we'll go to the next page now. And also is, this bill has been before us for a few years and we've worked on FOIA. This would create an Office of FOIA Review at the Administrative Law Court. Most importantly, this would, um, impose new, uh, regulations, if you will, new rules on the city on what, or how quickly we have to respond to a FOIA request and, uh, how much we're able to charge people who, uh, for, for the, for the, uh, work that we do in responding to FOIA requests. This is another bill that is, is, we have it in, in a, in a, in a form right now that has been acceptable to cities and the Municipal Association and we hope that it can pass. But there have been some issues with, um, funding of the administ-, of the extra duties of the Administrative Law Court that have kept it from pass, passing last year and the year before. The next bill is one of the most obscure bills that you'll find that would have a big impact on the city. And we worked a lot on this and we expect to, this bill to be back again this year, which is in essence, an effort by the PVC pipe industry to try to, um, gain market share on the ductile iron pipe industry. To sort of make this as brief as possible, this would be a state... The, the way the bill works is, is the state precludes the municipalities from bidding out their water and sewer pipe in a certain way and requires them to bid it out in another way. We, as a city, are in general opposed to any state legislation that, that gets down into how we run our city. But we are also very opposed to this legislation, which would subvert the, um, professional opinions of our water and sewer staff and would sort of set the table for litigation if things didn't go the way that the people bidding on the project would want them to go. The next bill, which is one of our top priorities, is the Annexation Bill. We've talked a lot about that. Last year, it was sponsored by Mary Tinkler. She's no longer in the legislature. She's the person who took Bobby Harold's position. She did not run for reelection. This year, that same bill will be sponsored by Mandy Powers Norrell, who is a House member from Lancaster, and we are working to get people to sign up as cosponsors. This would allow the city or any local government to annex in twenty-five acres or less that is totally surrounded by the city, or totally surrounded by the city except for estate border or public lands. The next bill is one that has become a priority. We're not positive that it will be back this next year, but we will, we, we are gonna do more work on it this year if it does come back. This is a bill that is essentially a fight between the, um, kind of the, the full-scale corporate childcare providers and the people who provide childcare sort of on the side, if you will. People who run a childcare or a daycare out of their home. And so it's trying to put tighter regulations on people who are smaller daycare providers pushed by the larger daycare providers. In the middle of that fight, some of the definitions, um, in the bill would lay, the regulations that they want to lay on childcare providers on the City of Columbia's after-school programs and summer day camps. So we are working to get that, to get that requirement out of the bill. It's up in the air right now. Today's the first day of session and we don't even know if the bill's gonna come back this year. But if it does, it's something that needs to be taken care of because of the onerous burdens that it would put on our, our, uh, summer day camp programs and our after-school programs that the city parks and recreation run. Finally, dam safety. Bill did not pass last year, as mentioned earlier, um, out of a number of concerns, which we can discuss if you want to, but we anticipate there'll be a dam safety bill this year. And we will monitor that for the effect that it will have on the city in the wake of the twenty fifteen floods. Okay, this is something that now we're up to, the new legislation this year that we anticipate that will be important to the city. This is a project that has come, I mean, sorry, this is a piece of legislation that has come out of Ori County and it would give local governments an additional taxing option for capital projects. This would be projects that a local government would like to do that would not be transportation projects and that they would not be hospitality tax projects. They could be any of those, but the definition has been drawn more broadly. The way the bill works, and we expect this bill to be introduced by the end of next week, is that it would give a local government the option to raise local sales taxes by up to one percent on a referendum that would have to be done in November of an election year. You know, there's, referendum can be done in a, in a, it can be a special voting referendum. The thing that needs to be pointed out is that you could, you could raise a half a penny, you could raise a quarter penny, you could raise up to a penny. You have to take twenty percent, at least twenty percent of the proceeds have to be used to roll back local property taxes. So if you, if you tax, if you raise the sales tax, at least twenty percent of the, of the receipts have to go to lower property taxes in the municipality. There are some municipalities who are looking to, to raise the sales tax and, uh, I should say some local governments. No, I guess it would be municipalities. They're looking to raise the sales tax and use all of it to roll back local property taxes. Essentially, having your tourist, if you're in a higher tourism area, having your tourist pay a piece of the local property taxes that the citizens are paying.
Exqui, Mr. Mayor, can I ask? Is, is that beneficial just for the homeowner or business? Because the problem is, is we're taxing rental property, commercial property at a different rate. They're not eligible for the rollback, so you're hitting them even more. I don't see the real advantage to this for the City of Columbia. If I'm sitting here going, "I'm trying to make investments, but I'm gonna continue to pay more and I'm paying more in sales tax and it's costing me more to collect it."
You've raised a good question. You've raised a good question as to whether the rollback has to apply to 6% property, or whether it has to apply to 4% property, or whether it can be at the option of the local government.
The local option sales tax applies to all classifications of government. I don't know how this one is drawn, but the first local option passed in 1990 goes back to all classifications.
My understanding was that it would have to apply equally across 4% and 6% property, but I don't, I will ask that. Again, this is not doing anything but giving, this, this doesn't do anything to raise the sales tax upon passage of the bill. It gives the local government the option to raise the sales tax if they want to by referendum. I also didn't mention maximum of eight years, that which the, those projects that would be funded by the, by the local option tax would have to be spelled out in the referendum so that they would have to be, they would have to be denoted and approved in the, in the referendum. So it's very, it's a very specific, it's very, very, the, the funding would have to be very specific.
Kyle, you just said optional, but this is with a mandatory property tax rollback. So if you pass it, are they saying at the state level that as a local government, we have to give a rollback of taxes?
If you, if you pass, it's an option to do it. This, this law could pass, and you could have four municipal governments around the state take advantage of it, and we don't. Or somebody, or nobody does, no, but you don't have to take advantage of it. Today, there is the, the penny sales tax for transportation that you, that is an option for approval. You don't have to do it. There's hospitality tax, 2% for hospitality tax, you don't have to do it. So this would just be opening up another option for local governments.
Any insight as to why this is a Municipal Association priority? Is it, is it for some of our more tourist-oriented counties? Is that the focus?
Yes, it is being pushed by the more tourist-oriented counties on the coast.
I think it would be, at least we prudent, at least we prudent to do an analysis to see how it would affect a place like Columbia, and specifically the question Daniel raised about, is this all commercial property as, as well, I assume.
The roll, I think the rollback, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think the rollback provision is something that had to be included in the legislation to make it potentially palatable, in a sort of, if there's not a rollback in there, there's no way it's going to get passed.
Sure. I guess the question is, a rollback of which taxes? Is this 4%, 6%? Industrial property as well, 10%? I mean, is this everyone, or is this just 6%? Or, I mean, I think that, that makes a big difference depending on who it applies to. If it's all property taxes, then obviously.
Makes it less palatable.
And then I guess, the title of it is municipal tax relief, so is it just incorporated areas? I mean, so like our, our transportation tax, that's county-wide, so would that not be affected to people who live in unincorporated areas?
It is designed to be a sales tax in municipal governments, not county governments, and not just cities. So the sales tax would be applied in the city.
We'd have the option, like the county had the option to do the sales tax, we'd, this gives us an option of a sales tax.
Exactly.
So it just, but in any event, this is not necessarily your bill, but we're working with staff. Let's take a look at the bill and at least determine what the, what the potential impact of it could be if, in fact.
What it could be if you decided, if it passed, if you decided to do, if you decided to put together a bill, that would be put before the citizens of the city only who would vote on it for those projects that are outlined.
Make sure you have the microphone.
I think it's going up and down.
I'm sorry?
Just pull it up a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah, make sure people who aren't in the room can hear you.
I don't think it pulls up. Oh, there we go. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. So we'll, we'll look into the property to, rollback provision. You don't know the answer to that, do you? Okay. I didn't, I did not get that from the briefings that we've had. We have another meeting on, on Thursday at the Municipal Association. The next item that's on new legislation that I wanted to mention is increasing from $1 million to $3 million the amount of tax credits that could be used by the South Carolina Association of Economic Developers to, or for the, actually, the name of the tax is the South Carolina Community Development Tax Credit Program. Currently, people who make donations to a qualified South Carolina Community Development Corporation or Community Development Financial Institution are eligible for a tax credit on that donation of 33% state tax credit. They have a cap of $1 million. So there are corporations and community development financial institutions in the City of Columbia. If you make a donation to them of $100, you get a $33 state tax credit. After $1 million in credits has been used up, the Department of Revenue says, you're out, no more. The South Carolina Association of Community Economic Development is asking for that cap to be raised from $1 million to $3 million. This is an, an item that I know has been of some importance to the mayor because of the, all of these kinds of, of organizations in the City of Columbia that are doing good work, and it's, it is something that the city could lend its, could lend its, its endorsement to that might help push the, push it along. It's not something that I think that we'll be in the lead on because the South Carolina Association for Community Economic Developers will be in the lead. The Municipal Association, this is, has their list of advocacy initiatives, and this is their list for the coming year, and I really should say our list, because we work pretty closely with the Municipal Association, and city, of course, is, is a member and the largest member. So we have business license tax, we have local government fund, we have the municipal sales tax, capital sales tax that we, we talked about a few minutes ago. We have annexation. The Criminal Justice Academy is an issue that the Municipal Association is working on with the Criminal Justice Academy. It just really isn't something that has a high impact on the City of Columbia, but we're including it because it's their, it's in their list of advocacy initiatives. Funding for body worn cameras, we do receive some funding, we did receive some funding this last year from the state for our body cameras. It's not, we received in the five figures of funding, I understand, from Chief Holbrook. The, the Municipal Association is, is supporting that until body cameras are paid for across the state. Then we have transportation funding, and then the last one is one that we've been working on for a few years, which I think there may be a chance to pass some legislation on this year, which is the ability to put the costs of, of dealing with blighted property onto the property tax bill of citizens in the county. Today, the city, the Richland County does, if we spend $10,000 to demolish a blighted piece of property, demolish a structure or blighted piece of property, this, we have to wait until that property owner pays us, if they ever do. The only way to make sure that that property owner pays us or that we get our money is if we can get it onto the property tax bill that goes to that property owner. If they don't pay the property tax bill, then it goes up for sale, and then we get paid out of the proceeds of the sale. This, we've been trying to work on this for a few years, language at the, at the, at the state level that would give us the ability to put those costs onto the bill of the property owner after we have had to spend money out of the city's property, take care of that property. Okay, so that, those are the Municipal Association.
Now, historically, hasn't part of the Criminal Justice Academy's funding come from omnibus funding, some of the funds off of tickets and the like, and?
It comes from, and the issue, as I understand it, is that their funding comes almost exclusively from a percentage of money that comes off of the uniform traffic ticket.
Yeah.
And they are looking for a more stable source of funding from the legislature so that they don't have to depend on how many traffic tickets are written on the uniform traffic ticket. And I don't think, I don't know, there, there is a deeper story than that as to why we're working together with them, but I think it has to do with a, with a, an initiative that Miriam Hare at the Municipal Association began working on with the Criminal Justice Academy. And of course, we all rely on the Criminal Justice Academy. They train all our police officers.
Sure. Historically, historically, omnibus funds have gone to a number of different agencies, and everyone's wanting much more stable funding, and obviously, the Criminal Justice Academy should have a stable source of funding. I'm curious as to how, if in fact, they, they find some way to stabilize funding in some way, what that does to the omnibus funds and what local governments collect. So just curious about that.
What it would do to, oh, so what would happen to the?
What's the impact on, what's the impact on, on municipalities? I assume it must be either revenue neutral or to the benefit of the MACA supporting it, but it'd just be interesting still to know.
Right. We'll figure that out and get it to you. That's, I'm, the Criminal Justice Academy budget is surprisingly low to me. I remember hearing it recently, and it was not, their annual budget is sub $10 million, maybe sub $5 billion. I didn't think it was, I would have thought that they would have needed more money than that. Okay, so here we are now to the heart of the legislative, the policy discussion.
Yes, sir. Mr. McDowell.
There's, we used to be able to, we used to recover those funds 25 or 30 years ago on the Richland County property tax bills. At some point, they quit doing it. The law is silent as to whether they can do it or not. So when, when local governments like Columbia go to their county, the county and asks them to put those, those charges on someone's property tax bill, then they turn to their lawyer, and they say, can I do it? And the lawyer says to them, the law does not say that you can do that. So they say, we can't do that. We would prefer that there would be a state law that says counties must include on the property tax bill charges for cities, dah 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 dah. The county association says, no must language. We won't, we will not accede to you telling us what we have to do. What we are talking to them now about, and I think we're going to get somewhere, is may language, so that it would say counties may include on their property tax bill costs cities have incurred with regard to maintenance and upkeep of that property. So if we could get language that would give the lawyer for the county the ability to say, yes, you can do that, then it would just be up to us and our good relations with our county to get them to agree to do it again. Does that help?
That helps.
So the 2017 proposed City of Columbia priorities are essentially a recapitulation of what we've just talked about, but council may want to put an asterisk by some of these until we get more information. Typically, what we do is we agree to a list of legislative priorities that have been approved by council, and then that is, and then we can then say, the City of Columbia supports this. So we have government fund, we have business license tax, we have annexation of enclaves, we have animal shelter legislation, which we expect to be, well, it's already been prefilled, new legislation that would affect the animal shelter. We have legislation affecting the piping at the Water and Sewer Department. We have the after-school and summer day camp programs legislation. We have then the capital, the Municipal Tax Relief Act, which is a capital projects sales tax. And then the, I'm sorry, I skipped one. The one was, that we just discussed, discuss for the blighted, ability to recover funds for blighted properties. And then skipping that, the next one out there, we already covered, the tax cap for the community economic development organizations, and then monitoring these other bills that will have an impact on the city, but that are bills that are sort of macro to the entire state, that we want to make sure nothing jumps in there that would be particularly objective to our interests. If there's no discussion of those issues, I would point to the last two slides that discuss.
One question. So Kyle, standardizing business license tax collection across the state, I mean, is that a broad statement? Is that we're supporting the MAC approach? Because obviously, there are a number of different approaches that have been proposed over, over the years. Do we?
We would, we would, we would support their approach. We used the exact same language in the City of Columbia's wording as we did on the page before in the Municipal Association wording. We could have said, support Municipal Association standardized business license tax.
I'd rather have some specificity. I mean, we've had some that standardized collection practices that decimate our budgets.
This, this would say that you would use the model that's been promoted by the Association for a number of years.
I agree. I'd probably just like to propose that, to be clear, that we're supporting the MAC approach.
I would certainly support that.
Yeah, I know you would.
If we could say, support the Municipal Association's approach to standardizing business license tax.
Yeah, yeah. Just a little more specifically.
Kyle, we typically ask council for a motion endorsing those priorities.
And we do typically ask for a motion endorsing those priorities. I don't want to run roughshod over the concerns that were raised, though, about the, the capital sales tax options, if we want to save that for a different time. That would be third from the bottom, support MAC effort to increase options for municipalities to raise revenue to support specific capital projects.
I don't think there's opposition. I think there's just clarity needed as exactly what that meant, you know, because obviously, we, we, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't be required to have a referendum at all, but just being clear is exactly what, yeah, what it, what it means, so.
And the way it's worded there, from the manager's perspective, we certainly would support options for municipalities to increase revenue for capital projects, so maybe that's
I think this is close enough for the point in the legislative session that we found ourselves today, because this is going to take a two-year process to get through, and there'll be lots of changes. We do support finding other options for cities, and I think from the conversation of this council, we want it to be a broad-based rebate of property taxes so that the people that were hurt by Act 388 that was passed by the state legislature get some relief.
Right.
And I'd like to make a motion that we support the recommendation of legislative priorities for the City of Columbia as stated.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none, move the previous question. Call roll.
My apologies.
I'm sorry.
I encourage you all to vote during the work session. My apologies, Mr. Mayor. Turney Knott.
He's, he's changing seats. He's out of sorts.
I'm sitting in most here. What else?
Well, Turney Knott is worth her salt, because she came and pulled my coattail on that one, so we can bring it up this evening.
And I would love to, and this is just looking forward to, to next year, you know, obviously, our priorities are very city-specific in terms of municipal corporation, the work that we do and what we need to do. I would love, as, as we look forward to start thinking, of course, more about, about the entrepreneurial environment in which we live, the business environment, and ways in which we can support some things that cities don't necessarily always support, but that, that work to the benefit of our, of our, of our citizens, if we see some pieces or proposed pieces of legislation that we know will be in the ecosystem that don't necessarily specifically apply to the, the things that we do day-to-day, but might enhance the, the fortunes and prospects of our citizens.
You're, you're right. Typically, our review, there have been, gosh, I think there were 275 bills filed in the House and something more than that. There's over 550 bills that have been filed, prefilled in December, which means that Caroline, oh, cash on my staff, read over 550 bills. Bo Cash, all my staff read, over 550 bills, and at least the heading for them to pull out the ones that may be of interest to us, or that usually of interest is, is our ox getting gored, is usually of interest. And, and, and the way that we assess those is, will this bill have an impact on the operations of the city? So, you're correct. We will look for opportunities to jump in on other bills that would have an impact on the, the city's business environment, the city's community, uh, quality of life environment, but that might not be operations of the city.
Thank you.
Ms. Devine?
And this is, um, this might not be specifically for, for Kyle. This might be more of a Wana thing, but Ms. Wilson, um, I guess another thing, just kind of looking forward, especially how we talk about our funding and our opportunities to actually do things that support, um, our priorities that we will be unveiling on January 31st, um, to make sure that we are exploring all options for help or partnerships with the, with the state. Um, I know Councilman McDowell and I had a meeting with Senator Scott regarding, um, assistance with one of our parks, um, but in, in that vein, you know, parks, sidewalks, you know, I know we try our best to, to take advantage of, um, the different funding sources that we've traditionally done, um, but I think that considering that we may be seeing a little bit less on the federal level, I think we're going to have to be a little bit more aggressive, um, with looking at other opportunities. And so, if we could, um, number one, making sure our delegation is aware of what our priorities are and what some of the projects that we have that they may could find funds for, but also just exploring opportunities to, to bring some additional funds to the table to help us, um, in areas like sidewalks where we've not been able to really fund them to the level we need to.
There are opportunities for that type of small funding at the State House if they are compelling projects, and they are priorities of our legislative delegation who are on either the Ways and Means, very few, or Finance Committee in the Senate, there are a number there, including Senator Scott. So, that's something that we are more than happy to help council members work on.
Thank you, Kyle.
All right. Thank you.
I know we're pressed for time. I just want to mention, because council's been discussing this, that the Municipal Association Legislative Action Day is on February 1st. We're going to have the mayor's breakfast that morning. These are, I believe that we are, um, talking about inviting legislators to that breakfast. We're, so we are, um, looking for opportunities to, um, work with and get acquainted with and be in the same room as our city and county delegation. Our City of Columbia Legislative Reception is February 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock at the Columbia Museum of Art. And, um, then there was also a couple of mentions of working with the county, and we've discussed that, and we can have those further discussions as we go along.
Kyle, make sure we include our school district members on that as well.
Opportunities to get together with school districts? Are you talking about for the mayor's?
It could be, it could be the same event. I just know that we've traditionally tried to do some things with the county, um, but I know that there will be some opportunities in the future that will be needing some assistance and support from the district, the school district, and we need to make sure they're included, and we continue to develop those relationships as well. I think Mr. The mayor and Mr. Duval went to an event last night that I heard was a really nice event.
Good.
School districts.
Yeah.
Mr. Duval?
I would just like to reemphasize the importance of attending the Municipal Association's Legislative Action Day on February the 1st.
Is that because you're getting an award? You're graduating.
Graduating summa cum laude.
Thank you, Lottie.
But, uh, this is the statewide meeting of all the elected officials, and they'll have 600 municipal elected officials there, and, and we are the capital city, and we're the largest city in the state, and we need to have a visible presence at that meeting to, to lead this legislative charge that Kyle has, has outlined for us, and to show our support for not only the big cities in the state, but all the cities in the state.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Wana will also, you'll start getting your reports again, the same tracking device that we've used for the last several years. You'll start seeing those reports coming to you every week. Um, it's the same tracking device that the Municipal Association has used for many years as well. I think that has served us well to have, have that. So, if you ever need any assistance with logging into it or reporting any ideas you see on legislation as it's coming out, please let us know.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Thank you.
I would move that we go into executive session for discussions and negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements pursuant to Section 30-470A2, the Lake Catherine Dredging Project incline memorandum of understanding, discussions of employment of employee pursuant to Section 3470A1, city attorney, and receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to Section 304070A2, parks and rec hospitality tax use, and, uh, receipt of legal advice pertaining to Grace Outdoor Billboard, Billboard Permit Appeal.
All right, is there a second?
Like.
Any discussion? Saying none, move the previous question, Court Callereau.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.